Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Tuesday evening, September 2nd. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly Mayor Newsom, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Councilmembers Fierko Kuditsky.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine and raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each section. Before we begin, I'd like to call out that item number 10 of new business has been pulled tonight at the request of staff, and it will be rescheduled for a future meeting. We'll now move into our ceremonial items. The first ceremonial item, Toyanaka San Mateo Youth Program and International Exchange Program, a presentation. And before we begin, I have some remarks. It is truly an honor to reflect on what was a once-in-a-lifetime experience. This past July, our delegation traveled to Toyanaka, which included six middle school San Mateans, three adult chaperones, a member of the Sister City Board Association, Association Board, excuse me, where we were welcomed with incredible warmth, generosity, and friendship. Those memories will stay with us forever. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the Toyanaka City, Sister City Association, and the San Mateo Toyanaka Sister City Association. Your continued dedication and hard work are the reason this exchange continues to thrive, building bridges that connect our community across the Pacific and further establish the bonds of friendship. I also want to recognize the players and coaches who participated in the San Mateo Toyanaka Sister City Youth Baseball Exchange. In addition, I want to thank the board members and our community who've worked together for decades to create opportunities for our young athletes. These goodwill exchanges have not only fostered sportsmanship, but they've also built lifelong friendships that embody the spirit of this sister city relationship. A very special thank you must go to the host families here in San Mateo. You opened your heart, your homes and your hearts to our visitors from Toyanaka, and through your kindness, you gave our guests a true sense of belonging. These moments, sharing meals, showing our city, and creating friendships, are what make this relationship real and lasting. This exchange is not about official visits or ceremonies. It's about people. It's about the students who return home with new perspectives, the athletes who carry with them bonds of teamwork and respect, and the families who build connections that span generations. As we gather tonight, let us celebrate the friendships renewed, the lessons learned, and the joys we have shared. And let us look forward with hope and enthusiasm to the many opportunities still ahead for San Mateo and Toyanaka. Thank you. And now back to our regular script. So Chantal is going to bring up a comments from Toyanaka Mayor Sane's video remarks. And while she's doing that, I'd like to acknowledge that some of our colleagues from Toyanaka are currently online. And so while she's bringing up the video, could we bring up that? And we can all give them a big wave? Do they see us? Because I don't see them yet. Hey! Toyanaka City Staff, there they are! Thank you so much, Toyanaka! All right, we will go ahead and begin. Chantal has a video with remarks from the mayor. Thank you, Chantal.
San Mateo City Committee members, San Mateo San Mateo Church Church members, San Mateo citizens, and San Mateo citizens, good evening. I'm Toyanaka City Mayor Osana Ichiaki. I'm glad to be here today. I'm so happy to be here. I'm so happy to be here. I couldn't have participated in a live game today, so I'm really sorry. But I wanted to share a video message with you. First of all, I'm glad you came to the Toyanaka City World Trade Program. I'm glad you came to Toyanaka City. I was so excited to be here. I was so excited to be here. At the end of the week, the students of both cities collaborated on a wonderful achievement. I hope that you guys will continue to be friends with each other and become friends with each other. I hope that you guys will continue to be friends with each other. After the program ended, I was invited to join the Toyanaka City青少年野球親善交流団 as a member of San Mateo City. I'm glad you guys were here. I'm glad you guys were here. I'm glad you guys were here. I'm grateful for your cooperation. And Rob Newsom, Mayor, Alex Kojikeyan, City Manager, Chantal Eaton, Deputy City Clerk. I'm glad you guys came to Toyanaka City. I'm glad you guys came to Toyanaka City. I'm glad you guys cooperated on the issues that the two cities face. I'm glad you guys are still working on the bonds between the two cities. I'm glad you guys are still working on the bonds between the two cities.
Now, we will have a brief photo presentation that Chantal and Martin will be sharing. Now, I would like to invite San Mateo Sister City Association President Danny Harris to the podium.
What a wonderful video. With the sound, yeah. Good evening, Mayor Newsom, members of the City Council, and members of the San Mateo community. My name is Danny Harris, head coach of the San Mateo Sister City baseball team. And on behalf of the San Mateo Sister City Association, thank you for this honor and for recognizing our work this evening. It means so much to our volunteers and the families who make these exchanges possible. Earlier this summer, we had the privilege of welcoming a delegation from our sister city of Toyanaka, Japan. Over the course of five games, we saw plenty of competition, but in truth, the results didn't matter. What mattered were the friendships formed, the nervous introduction that turned into laughter, and the bonds of friendship that now connect our two communities more deeply than ever. This recognition is very, is really a celebration of San Mateo itself, the host families who opened their homes, the Sister City Board members who worked tirelessly, and the city's continued support over more than four decades. Together, we are showing the next generation that while oceans may separate us, shared experiences and friendships bring us closer together. Thank you again for this recognition and for supporting the San Mateo Sister City Association. We are proud to represent this city and look forward to many more years of exchanges and friendship. Domo arigato gozaimas, and thank you. So now we're going to mention all of the participants. We have our team over there. They will be acknowledged after. For those that we do announce, please stand up, wave, somehow allow us to acknowledge you. For our host families, for those that are here, obviously, opening their homes and welcoming 20 boys from Japan is no small feat. So we would like to honor and represent and recognize the Barsetti family, the Lee family, the Chow family, the Cruz family, the Klemph family, the Lewis family, the Provence family, the Jones family, and the Kobayashi family. And as a representative of the San Mateo Sister City Board, I would like to recognize Martin McTaggart, Mina Cammer, George Misante, Jan Bousa, Allison Mahiasich, Stephen Katayama, Al DiMatteo, Yoko Anderson, and Carolyn Chevall for tirelessly making this exchange possible. We also had some amazing translators that we couldn't have had the exchange without. I'm going to apologize now for struggling with names, but I'm going to do my best. Eyoko Atsuka, Hiroki Maruyama, Kenta Cammer, Kyu Miwa, Mia Akita, Neoko Maruyama, Sho Higamoto, Shuma Atsuka, Yuta Cammer, Rina Hajimoto, and Suti Osugi. Thank you so much. And as Mayor Newsom mentioned, the expo participants, it's important to acknowledge their building of bonds. Jennifer Newsom, Ann Harris, Jeanette Albret, Elizabeth Totola, Joakim, Brittany Samora, Del Gadio. They were the chaperones. And the middle school students, Kate and Chu, Noel, Torna Bene, Everett Wilhelms, Evelina Sevilla, Alana Choi, Addison Havelena, Mara Newsom, and Meev Newsom. And now to honor the players of the exchange, we have Liam Finn. Come on up. Jack Schaefer. We have Jacob Provance. We have Donovan Chow. We have Landon Lewis. We have Jax Connolly. We have Noah Jones. We have Elliot Klemph. We have Max Johnson. We have Jacob Armstrong. And we have one of our amazing coaches, Brian Yoshino. Not present tonight. We have Joaquin Lee, Caleb Lee, Noah Sterling Bailey, Luke Cruz, Leo Barsetti, and coaches John DiMatteo, Kyle Mahiasich, and our amazing game day announcer and DJ, Angelina DiMatteo, and Aiden Yoshino.
Everybody who's had their name called, so that's the team and all of you, please make your way to the front. We're going to take a big group photo. Team first. Host families included, please.
Chaperone, yeah, absolutely. It's gonna be most of the room. Harris, he's come in the middle.
Why don't you guys back up? Back up a little bit. That way, if anybody needs to go in the front.
Trying to figure out this camera angle. All right, you guys, the Toyanaka City Staff are watching us. So on the count of three, we're all going to give a bow and say arigatou mas. One, two, three.
Yeah, open up your certificates, gang. Make sure they're right reading. Right side up. Okay. There you go.
Smile. All right. Toyanaka on three. One, two, three. Toyanaka! That wasn't very good. One more time. One, two, three. Toyanaka!
One, two, three, action. We got a, we got a big action.
Big action. One, two, three. Action! All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for everything.
Nice to see you!
Where's Caleb?
Oh, gosh.
We're going to take about four minutes, four minutes to clear the room, but we do have to get going. So please don't linger. Thank you. By Kevin Foles, our emergency service analyst. And before we do that, I don't know, it's doing it out of order. So yeah, we'll have an acknowledgement. Would Kevin Foles, please come to the front? Thank you, Kevin.
On behalf of the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department Office of Emergency Services, I want to thank you for this proclamation, for highlighting the importance of disaster preparedness. Preparedness begins at home, whether it is building a go-bag, making a family plan, or getting involved in programs like CERT. When we take these steps individually, we become stronger and more resilient as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We'll now check to see if there's any public comment on this subject.
No public comment on this item, but we do have a proclamation which.
Kevin, stay here because we're going to read a proclamation. Anyone have any questions before I do? Okay. Whereas, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security first sponsored National Emergency Preparedness Month in 2004 as a nationwide effort to increase personal preparedness for emergencies and large-scale disasters in local communities. And whereas, National Preparedness Month provides an opportunity to remind us that we all must prepare ourselves and our families now and throughout the year, and focus on planning with an overarching theme, preparedness starts at home. And whereas, the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department offering free training via the Community Emergency Response Training, CERT, program to educate the ever-growing number of both citizens and people working in the city of San Mateo to become more prepared for emergencies. And whereas, ongoing emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every citizen and civic organization, and as such, all citizens and civic organizations are urged to make preparedness as a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas, the city of San Mateo is further preparedness efforts by their engagement in the San Mateo County's Disaster Preparedness Day, which endeavors to educate the community on a variety of disasters and emergencies, teaches citizens life-saving skills, and prepares them with essential supplies. And whereas, National Emergency Preparedness Month is also an opportunity to pay tribute to America's first responders who put it, who put themselves at risk for the safety of their fellow citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor of the city of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim September 25th as National Emergency Preparedness Month. In the city of San Mateo, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to evaluate and update their plans for a large-scale emergency and its aftermath. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to come up for a quick photo. Although I think I project pretty well. We are now moving beyond the ceremonial portion of tonight's meeting, which includes the business items being considered by the council. For that reason, I would like to remind all in the room and online that we will be enforcing our rules of decorum. As such, we do not allow for cheering, jeering, or booing during the business portion of the meeting, as this tends to put a chill on public comment. Our goal is to ensure that all perspectives are heard. Our motto is to give respect, get respect, and we appreciate your cooperation with this. I'll now ask the city clerk to please read the consent calendar.
With pleasure, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number four, League of California Cities' Annual Conference Voting Delegate Designation. Item number five, San Mateo Management Employees' Association Side Letter of Agreement Amendment. Item number six, San Mateo Safety Management Association Memorandum of Understanding Amendment. Item number seven, Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team Mental Health Partnership Agreement. And finally, item number eight, Basins Two and Three Underground Flow Equalization System, or UFS, Construction Contract Contingency Increase.
Are there any members of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Mayor Newsom, we have not received any requests in chambers to speak on the consent calendar items, and we do not have any hands raised in our virtual environment.
Okay, then I heard Councilmember Fernandez already. Is there a council member who would like to make an approval, motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Councilmember Fierko Kuditsky.
Yes.
And Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We now move to, yes, please.
Since I, in the special session, made a comment about the importance of our mental health services, particularly at our public safety officers and our police department champion, I wanted to call the, the public's attention to item number seven, the Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team Mental Health Partnership. This is something unique that San Mateo does. It has been incredibly well-received by the community, and it has been incredibly well-received by our police officers. And this partnership is just so special, and I only hope it grows and that more cities consider adopting it because it has been quite a success and a mark of the value of our entire community. So thank you.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, council member. The next thing on the agenda is open public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter that is not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. City Clerk, can you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment only?
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. We have received a total of five requests to speak in chambers, and I have one hand raised in our virtual environment. We will be announcing the name of the final speaker. So if you do wish to speak, please raise your hand to provide me with a request to speak slip at your earliest opportunity. Seeing no requests forthcoming, our final speaker in chambers will be Angela Rucker, and our final speaker in our virtual environment will be the user with the screen name iPad. We will be setting the per-council adopted rules and procedures. We'll be setting the time limit at three minutes per speaker. When I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, that'll help us make sure we receive all your comments expeditiously. Our first three speakers will be Tom Lees, followed by Nels Delander, and Jacqueline Mack.
I wore my Dodgers shirt today because Carolyn and Steve are Dodgers fans. They do great work with Tanaka. Anyway, it was 10 months ago today at the ballot box when I stepped in and I read the ballot measure, "Shall Measure T allow for additional affordable housing for low- and middle-class income residents and meet state housing requirements without raising taxes?" What happened last session, we tried to raise taxes. I saw on the front page news of the Daily Journal that Foster City has decided to not raise taxes. I think we should follow through for our Measure T promise to not raise taxes. PG&E, water, garbage, bridge tolls, groceries, everything is going up. Property taxes are going up. I worked proudly on the flood-free measure. I'm glad it passed, but my wife was mad at me because we're already paying high property taxes. I'm grateful that we can pay property taxes, but we have to find some other way. And I don't think that relying on developers' fees for budgeting is a good long-term solution for budget problems. And I do remember a pamphlet, one of many glossy pamphlets that came in the mail, and it was a balloon in the sky, and the tagline said, "Inflation keeps going up." And that was a bizarre claim that Measure T would make, that it would help with inflation. So anyway, I just hope we don't do that. I'll just switch gears and say that I'm sorry I missed Sue Lampard's party last week, but I got to spend some time with her and with Lori Heater at her house last week, and she's an amazing lady and a great asset to the city, as all of you are, even though I don't agree with everything you guys do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Nels Delander, followed by Jacqueline Mack and Mary Willis.
My name is Nels Delander. I'm Representative Carbers, Local 217, of San Mateo County. I'm here tonight to introduce a prequalification ordinance document that will help San Mateo make sure public construction projects are done by responsible, qualified, and community-focused contractors. This ordinance applies to the larger projects, those worth about $1 million and more. It sets clear rules about who can do these jobs, so we can get the best value on the tax dollars to support good jobs right here in our community. Here's what it does. First, it makes sure that contractors use state-approved apprenticeship programs. This means workers are properly trained and safe to do the job at hand. Second, it encourages hiring local workers. That keeps the jobs and the money in our community stay in our own community. Third, it requires contractors to provide health care for workers so they stay healthy and productive. These are public work projects, so the health care cost is already added to the prevailing wage. This is about building a smarter, safer, and stronger while supporting local workers and using our public funds wisely. In addition, it keeps the city in control of their own construction interests. I ask for your support on putting this ordinance on the agenda item as an alternative to the proposed Community Workforce Agreement. Unlike the CWA, it has zero cost for the city and with language that benefits all labor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Jacqueline Mack, followed by Mary Willis, and our final speaker in chambers will be Angela Rucker.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Mack. I am a longtime resident in the Eastside North Central area. I went to Turnbull, College Park, San Mateo High. Right now, I'm quite upset about the parking spaces that you have taken away from our community. A petition was signed by the residents, 80%, to not take the parking away, but you did not go along with the wishes of the community. You removed the parking against the community's wishes. Humboldt Street does not have a good look. It looks like a ghetto. They're parked on the dirt, lawns, they're taken away. It does not have a good look, and I don't like it. How would you like your neighborhood to look like Humboldt? You would not. You wouldn't allow it, but you did it to our community. To me, that's a racist act. We want the parking back, not yesterday, not tomorrow, but today. Because of your acts, I am sick and tired of being sick and tired. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next two speakers will be Mary Willis, followed by Angela Rucker.
Good evening. My name is Mary Willis. I live in San Mateo, East San Andres and North Humboldt. I cannot park in front of my house. There's no parking on the side. I live on the corner. There's no parking on the side of my house. People five and six blocks away park in front of my house. When I go grocery shopping, I have to try to find a place to park so I can unload my groceries out of my car. I got a wheelchair, I got a broken leg. I would love to park in front of my house. And on Humboldt, where we have strategically put the bike lane, nobody rides there. I can count the people that ride there by the week, zero. We need people to stop driving so fast up and down Humboldt. It's like a racetrack. People drive way too fast. There's a pedestrian crossing sign right on the corner where I live. Some people push the button across the street, but some people don't. Somebody's going to get hit. Somebody's going to get hurt. And before we had the crossing light there, someone did die there. We need more four-way stop signs on Humboldt. That would slow the traffic down. We need to have that done now. Please give us backup parking. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Angela Rucker.
Thank you. Thank you much. Good evening. My name is Angela Rucker. I live at 127 North Idaho Street. Lived here for quite a bit. Parking, it is no fun. It is not... I can't tell you the agony when you were blocked in. Nowhere to park. People park and they infringe on your space to back out constantly. Calling for the service to remove a car is another issue. I've lived here for quite some time. I've lived in San Mateo for a long time. I lived in San Mateo when North Central was the scourge of the county. Been there, seen it, experienced it. To my knowledge, North Central did not ask for this horrendous parking situation, but we have it. I think the powers that be, whomever they are, should acquiesce to the will of the residents of North Central. It is hell. We need something done. You remove so many spots, people have to park somewhere, somewhere. So it's everywhere. Look at it again and make the proper decision. We need some sort of relief. I dare say, and perhaps I'm wrong, the powers that be who make these decisions probably don't live in North Central. It's really not nice. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be from our virtual environment. Please unmute your mic.
Yes, this is iPad, aka Mike Squire. Sorry, I do not know how to change that setting, and I will work on that. Thank you, council, for everything you do. I wanted to give a little bit different perspective on the Humboldt situation. I attended the meeting, I think it was last week, with about 30 or 40 community members, and I can say almost universally that there was not one person in the audience that day that was happy with what was being presented. You've already heard one side of the story. I wanted to make sure that you also appreciate those that are primarily focused on the safe streets angle. While the city did present a lot of great ideas, especially for Idaho and Fremont, it could slow traffic, improve pedestrian and bicyclist safety. This was presented as an either-or, that we could only get those if we reinstall parking on Humboldt. The primary problem with that, however, is that if you are truly interested in making a connected network for people who bike from north to south in this area, neither Fremont nor Idaho fit the bill.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. That concludes public comment. Mike, were you finished with your comments?
No, I was not.
Okay, please continue.
Sorry, maybe I have a bad connection. The connection, or the...
We're losing your connection, Mike.
Shoot, I'm sorry. I'll keep it short. Please stop the Humboldt debacle. We've spent enough time and money on this, and nobody is going to use the safety improvements on Fremont or Idaho. Thank you, sorry for the connection.
No problem. Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment. Yes. Yes, of course.
I know we don't typically address public comment, but if we could just make a note to follow up with the person whose driveway is being blocked by vehicles and have PD look into that.
That's fine. Do we have the contact information, Martin?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we'll follow.
Thank you for that. Good call-out. Okay, so we're going to move on to item number nine, old business. This is the Delaware Street Safe Routes to School Corridor Bike Lane Improvements Update. We'll have a presentation by Sang Hee Cho, the Associate Engineer. Welcome, Sang.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Newsom and City Council. Thank you for this time tonight, for us to be able to come back since the May 5th council meeting to discuss our project, our South Delaware Street Safe Routes to School Corridor Bike Lane Improvements Project. Again, my name is Sang. I work for the Public Works Department for the Traffic Engineering Team. I'm joined here by Bethany Lopez, Traffic Engineering, our Senior Engineer for the Traffic Team. And I'm also joined here by our Project Design Consultant, Joe Paul with Sandis, for any questions you might have for us towards the end of tonight's presentation. With that, we can move right along. So the goal of tonight is to get council feedback. Essentially, the question kind of posed on your screens. Does council support staff's recommendation to move forward with the revised design for the project and proceed with bidding the project? Here we have tonight's presentation agenda. We'll have a brief time for project overview, noting that in the May council meeting, we did kind of have more time to go over it more extensively. But in the interest of time, we'll kind of spend more time on the third item on tonight's agenda. Secondly, we'll talk about some of the engagement and feedback received for the project since the project origins, as well as the recent round of outreach in spring of 2025 or April. This also does cover staff's responses and efforts to respond to some of the feedback received from the public, as well as the May council meeting, as well as our efforts to get answers from outside organizations and other agencies. Next, we'll spend time talking about the revised project design. So this portion of the presentation covers some of the project-specific revisions as compared to the original designs presented, both to the community back in April as well as the May council meeting. So everything that you see tonight will be entirely new to you. And we'll also spend some time summarizing some of the feedback received from the residents and the community last month, or August 19th, for the final community meeting, and we'll have time for discussion thereafter. So the project goals don't really change even given the revised design. So I mentioned this before, but the bicyclist, as well as pedestrian safety, this project seeks to really improve that, seeing that the current issues are the high level of traffic stress on Delaware Street for active transportation users, meaning that oftentimes these users are having to take other routes or off for the sidewalk, which are undesirable. We're looking to improve safety because Delaware Street is that crucial backbone infrastructure, as well as implement the project per the council-adopted bike master plan. Next, our project goal is also parking retention. Both our original and revised design was a result of intending to retain as much parking as possible while still delivering on the project intent and traffic operations. We are looking through our project to ensure that we aren't adding substantial congestion while balancing those safety enhancements that need to be made. And of note is that we did perform a traffic operations analysis to best guide the design decisions made for the project. Next, you're likely already familiar with this slide, but these are basically policies and actions taken directly from our circulation element for the city's general plan year 2040. I won't go through everything, but the most applicable one is likely Action C 4.9, or the second bullet from the bottom, Bicycle Master Plan Implementation. So that states, "Implement the Bicycle Master Plan's recommended programs and projects to create and maintain a fully connected, safe, and logical bikeway network and coordinate with the countywide system. Update the Bike Master Plan and related adopted city plans to reflect future bike and micro-mobility facility needs to support the city's circulation network." And next, we have here the current fiscal year city council priorities for the Public Works Department, number 28 being prioritized planning, design, construction, and maintenance of rapid safety. improvement projects citywide and ensure that there is a reliable city fund for long-term success. Number 40, complete all high, which this project is, and medium-high priority projects in the 2020 Bike Master Plan and Pedestrian Master Plan with the goal of prioritizing quick build projects where feasible. So with that, we can go into our brief project overview. Here we have on your screens the project status. Obviously, today being September 2nd and the timeline items after today's council meeting is largely contingent on council's decision for this project tonight. You'll see in the teal rectangle boxes towards the bottom of your screen, that's basically noting our two-phase stakeholder and community engagement efforts that were held for this project. So noting that, just wanted to know that that is rather robust for this project and as it spans practically one year. And it definitely resulted in that refined revised design that you'll, that I will represent on later tonight. So here we have a zoomed-in shot of our Bike Master Plan Network map. And I've highlighted in yellow here our project limits. And here from 19th Avenue, so Delaware Street reaching from 19th Avenue down to where Delaware becomes Pacific Boulevard, we have here the red dash line showing the separated bike lane or the physically protected bike lane portion of the project, as well as the orange dash line showing the bike Boulevard treatments from 28th down to Pacific Boulevard. Zooming out a little bit, I wanted to take a quick moment to note that South Delaware Street shown in green, shown in the green line here is the only continuous north-south corridor that runs straight from the northernmost city boundary, that being Peninsula Avenue, to the southernmost, where Delaware becomes Pacific Boulevard, excuse me, through the entire city. So that also serves to show just how and why this particular project scored so highly as a part of the Bike Master Plan. And that may be because of, and as stated in the Bike Master Plan, that is due to criteria such as destination served, existing safety and comfort on the street, collision history, levels of traffic stress, equity, as well as potential for future bike demand. Of note is that within the Bike Master Plan, this project is also included on the Rapid Implementation Network, which the goal of that being project, basically a list of projects with the purpose of delivering on a full network of high comfort bike facilities quickly. Zooming in a little bit, we have an image to your right of the project limits again. Here, we're showing Delaware Street, basically from the full project limits, or one mile of the project scope from 19th Avenue to Pacific Boulevard. We have from 19th to 28th avenues, point seven miles of the protected bikeways. And from 28th Avenue to Pacific Boulevard, point three miles of bike Boulevard treatments. And I have highlighted in these red circles on your screen just the presence of various different land uses that residents of San Mateo, as well as folks from really outside the city, come and use Delaware Street to access eventually. We have the presence of schools. Now it's College Park Elementary to your top right. We have another school, the Nueva School on East 20th Avenue. Definitely Hillsdale Caltrain Station and Hayward Park Caltrain Station not pictured here. The Event Center, the presence of businesses south of East 20th Avenue, as well as Bay Meadows Park. So that just serves to show how crucial this project is to enhance accessibility to these different land uses and destinations within the city. And not really pictured here on this slide is the presence of existing bike lanes such as on Pacific Boulevard, as well as potential future bike lane improvement projects on other streets that connect to Delaware Street. So with that, we can move into some of the community engagement efforts that has gone on since the project beginnings, all the way to about spring 2025. So on your, on this slide, I've split up the outreach efforts from Phase 1, or spring of last year, to Phase 2, spring of 2025. In the Phase 1 of outreach efforts, we wanted to best understand the priorities from the community through various styles of outreach that we perform, such as pop-ups along the corridor to help gather feedback and inform and build on a preliminary design. Building off of that preliminary design, we led into Phase 2 of outreach this year. We followed up with the community with a more robust and completed design while giving updates to the public about the current project status. And I'll note that in Phase 2, these last three bullets, the city council regular meeting in May, as well as the late May County Event Center meeting, we'll discuss later on in tonight, as well as the final community meeting where I'll kind of sit on and talk through more later. So these are some of the feedback themes that we received from the public in Phase 2 of outreach this year. We definitely heard in April that residents were unhappy about the lane reduction southbound, headed southbound between Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. And that was largely due to several reasons, as noted here. Essentially, them being unable to access their driveways during larger events at the County Event Center. The persistent issue of buses, trucks, delivery vehicles blocking travel lanes as these folks are looking to just make a quick stop to do what they need to do, as well as concerns about emergency vehicle access in the original design as presented to the community. Residents were also kind of concerned about some of the centerline striping style that we had presented to them in April between Bermuda and Saratoga, largely because it would make them unable or unable to make left turns legally into and out of their driveways. From the bike community, we had someone basically talk about vehicles blocking the bike lanes in current conditions north of 28th Avenue, as well as another similar issue around that area with dumpsters being placed in the bike lanes. And we also heard from these community meetings that the students were very excited to be able to use Delaware Street to bike more to school and to even get their friends to to eventually bike to school as the safety enhancements and the better accessibility through this project would help encourage students to be able to use Delaware in the post-project conditions. So this slide basically shows a list of activities that staff, activities and efforts that staff held since the Phase 2 community meetings. Obviously, we were able to speak with you a few months ago regarding this project and summarize some of the feedback received from residents in the April meetings. We were able to resolve the issue of the dumpster staging problem north of 28th Avenue. And we also actually revised the design to address the short-term parked vehicles in this same area in the bike lanes post-project, so I'll present on that later. We had meetings with the San Mateo County Event Center Board of Director staff, as well as the CEO of the County Event Center. We had conversations with Consolidated Fire, our Police Department, as well as the County Office of Emergency Services for their design approval for our project. As this was obviously in direct response to the residents being concerned about emergency access post-project conditions and these agencies were definitely, definitely had, were basically approving of our designs and had no concerns, as noted during our conversations. We made physical observations between the segment of Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. Staff was out there counting bikes and scooters, and notably, a lot of them were using the sidewalks to head north or south. Staff confirmed the semi-truck movements into Keller Plumbing that was causing some disruption to residents looking to access their driveways, and also the lane blockages from delivery vehicles from UPS or FedEx or the like. With all that, we, staff decided to move forward with a revised design for the segment between Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. And this also explores additional parking on Pacific Boulevard, as this revised design does have parking impacts within this segment. And we also, lastly, we also held coordination meetings with Sam Trans to ensure that we are meeting their design standards for bus stops on Delaware and confirm that existing stops will be there to stay. So with that, we can kind of talk through some of the challenges and concerns brought up by the community during this recent Phase 2 of outreach to remind council. Yeah, staff ultimately decided to revise the project design specific to this segment from Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. And we did present it to the community on August 19th. Fortunately, the revised design and enforced by staff were received favorably during this meeting, so I'll go into the specifics on that shortly. Just to give you a bearing on where exactly this segment is, is I've kind of taken that image of our project limits and shown Bermuda Drive, just south of 19th Avenue, as well as Saratoga Drive in that red box there, red box over there on your screens. And I know that I said that I will talk about the revised design, but I think it's worthwhile to discuss the original design to remind council regarding what our design intent was originally on this segment. So in essence, it was necessary to take a travel lane from Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive and actually redistribute the width of that travel lane to accommodate both the bike facilities while retaining most of the existing parking on the east side of South Delaware Street. So you can kind of see here that through this option, through the original design, we were able to retain fourteen of the existing parking spaces on the east side of South Delaware Street, meaning that there was an overall reduction of four parking spaces. So this is a more zoomed-out shot of that entire segment where we see that not only the lane reduction from Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive, that being the biggest concern from our residents, especially on the west side of Delaware. But we also had parking modifications on the east side as in post-project conditions, residents would be expected to park in between the vehicle lane, as well as the bike lane that have, in our designs, been shifted over to the curb side, as well as the residents on the east side for the duplexes having to change their trash handling behaviors. Zooming in a little bit, this is still the original design. The south is to the right of your screens. And the red arrow depicts the single southbound travel lane that opens back up right after Pacific Boulevard. So this is the first image shown tonight of our revised design. As compared to the previous slide, we have now two red arrows overlaid on the two southbound vehicle through lanes that we are keeping, meaning that we have four vehicle lanes altogether from the segment of Delaware from Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive. We're still opting to keep the dual southbound left turn pockets onto Saratoga Drive as the traffic operations report supports that the traffic traveling south in both the morning and afternoon peaks, traffic peaks, peak hours can be accommodated by the single through vehicle lane. And the dual left turn pockets will help us best manage traffic demands for the Event Center's biggest events, which typically occur five to seven times a year. Switching the view back up, back up in this slide as north and down as south, we'll actually travel back up north to see the full extent of the revised design covering from Saratoga Drive to Bermuda Drive. Before we do that, though, I wanted to quickly show an aerial of Pacific Boulevard. This is that portion of Pacific Boulevard where we will look to add additional parking to partially offset the parking losses on Delaware due to this revised design. So as you see on your screens, this revised design retains six of the existing eighteen parking spaces on the east side of Delaware in favor of keeping all four vehicle lanes or the southbound vehicle lane. Overall reduction, this results in an overall reduction of twelve parking spaces based on city standard parking space lengths. So here on the top right of this image, we can kind of see the beginnings of the parking losses as compared to the original design. And here we see the end of that parking reduction having to be made in the revised design. And obviously, this is the northern end of that revised design showing Bermuda Drive and us being able to keep all four vehicle lanes here. What is not shown on this slide, but is shown within your attachments, is that at the southbound approach at Bermuda and Delaware, the number one or inside lane is now a shared through-left lane, giving folks an option to just head straight south on Delaware from the number one lane. And here we have a table showing the different parking light, parking count, or a big secret, basically a parking count table. So the most important column is probably the parking loss column at the end, showing the differences between the original design and the revised design. In the revised design, we're having to impact up to twelve parking spaces, meaning that there is a difference of eight parking spaces lost between the original and revised design. And this does not include the potential increase of parking spaces and provision of a loading zone on Pacific Boulevard, which would help mitigate some of these losses. These are just some additional design changes that were made in response to public feedback, as well as council's feedback in the May 5th meeting. I just, we just opted to keep it here so that we're not, we're making the Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive travel lane discussion easier to digest. Here in the original design, we had a style of centerline that would legally be treated as a legal and physical barrier, meaning that drivers cannot cross them either from a driveway or making U-turns on them. In the new design, we opted to open it back up, basically permitting left turns now into driveways and out of them. And on the left pink box, that is a single set of double yellow stripes, which drivers can now legally cross to access driveways. This is at the intersection of East 20th Avenue and South Delaware Street, highlighting the departure lanes north of the intersections. We heard from the bike community regarding persistent issues of vehicles parking in existing bike lanes on Delaware. And also concerns that our project would not be addressing this issue. So this is the original design. And in the new design, we're opting to add additional protection with bowlers, as well as have designated short-term parking spaces for basically folks who want to access the apartment in the northwest corner of this intersection. We're creating these additional parking spaces, similar to the parking spaces that are still being retained between Bermuda to Saratoga. And here, we're really showing only two spaces, but realistically, it's likely that we can fit three to four three to four short-term spaces while protecting our bike users in this portion of the design or the project. Finally, these are, these are the items that we discussed with the public during the final community meeting for this project held on August 19th. So on the, on your screens right here, we're basically just seeing a list of items that staff accomplished prior to to basically outreach to the residents and make them aware of the upcoming community meeting. It was held at College Park Elementary, and we sent over 7,000 mailers in three different languages. We set up A-frame posters along the corridor and also did some door knocking more locally, especially for as many residents as possible living in and around Bermuda Drive to Saratoga Drive on Delaware Street. And we discussed changes to the original design during this meeting, including that revised design content that you just saw between Bermuda to Saratoga, as well as other changes for the project that would help benefit and make safety enhancements for bikes for this project. Overall, staff is confident that the revised design was well-received. There was some feedback, some hesitation from some residents regarding retaining the four travel lanes as it does mean some impacts to bike lane widths and buffers. We did not actually receive any comments from the public about parking losses. The third bullet over here underneath the feedback received notes that the bike Boulevard treatments are not as sufficient as they wished it to be. And that was something that we heard in prior meetings as well. And lastly, one community member did bring concerns about walking and biking to get to the Event Center being particularly difficult, which oftentimes results in attendees having to drive. So here's a photo taken at the community meeting and another angle over here as well. So in summary, we presented on a carefully balanced project that not only looks to align with the city's general plan and council priorities for Public Works, but also one that seeks to deliver on a highly prioritized project as designated by our Bike Master Plan. The project seeks to enhance bike and pedestrian safety while considering the needs of the community. This was accomplished by gathering feedback from the community through a robust outreach program spanning one year, a council meeting held in May, and finally, a community meeting where we presented on a revised design that was well-received by all interested community members. The ultimate project benefits include point seven miles of robust protected bike lanes or class four facilities. and point three miles of bike Boulevard treatments. We also carefully enhanced and designed for pedestrian safety enhancements that was presented on in the earlier council meetings and also brought forth to the public in the phase two outreach. The Delaware Safe Process School Corridor Bike Lane Improvements Project not only improves safety and connectivity locally, but also serves as a key link to existing and future citywide bike infrastructure improvements. Staff has considered and mitigated for project-related traffic and parking impacts while prioritizing safety and accessibility for all road users. Ultimately, we believe that these improvements aim to create a more sustainable, equitable and active San Mateo. And regarding next steps, um, we're obviously hoping to bid the project in this season or in fall of 2025. And thereafter award the project for construction in November and December of this year, leading into a breaking or breaking ground or onboarding the contractor in the new year as well as breaking ground from February to about April 2026 and having to phase the construction due to the long lead times of certain equipment such as signals for this project. Thank you.
Thank you for a great presentation. Uh, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Do we have some public comment? I suspect we might.
Yes, Mayor Newsom, we have a total of four requests to speak, five requests to speak.
Six.
Virtual environment, if you haven't already, please, if you do wish to speak on this item and you're participating in person, please raise, please provide me with a request to speak slip at your earliest opportunity. If you're in our virtual environment, please raise your hand. As previously, we will be announcing the name of our final speaker, both in person and virtually. So if we receive any requests to speak after that point, we will not be accepting further requests. Mayor Newsom, we have a total of seven or excuse me, eleven requests to speak, which will set our limit at two minutes per speaker. So we'll start with our in-person request to speak. And when I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, uh, that'll help us make sure we get through all of your comments expeditiously.
Thank you.
Our first three speakers will be, and apologies if I mispronounce your name, Minyon, followed by Kevin Simpson and Philip King. And our final speaker in chambers will be Paul Willard and our final speaker in our virtual environment will be Ely Young.
One second. Hi, my name is Minyon Balangi and I live in Bay Meadows, a few blocks from Delaware. I drive on Delaware at least four days a week because I'm a volunteer tutor at Sunny Bray Elementary. I strongly support the bike path and I would, I would, even if it did make my drive a little longer. I get as annoyed as anyone else when I have to wait for a bike, a pedestrian or a bus, or when I have to hunt for a parking space, but then I realize how selfish I'm being. I don't want to live in a place where the convenience of cars takes priority over everything else. Where just breathing the air is enough to make you sick on some days and people must risk their lives if they choose a non-polluting mode of transportation. I'm thrilled that San Mateo is trying to do something about this. I don't currently ride a bike and the main reason is that I'm scared. It's too dangerous. One of the other tutors has been riding his bike to Sunny Bray for years and I've often been tempted to follow his example. This bike path might be what it takes. If not, I'll at least be happy that he's less likely to be killed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Kevin Simpson, followed by Philip King and Danielle Gray.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, honorables. Um, thanks for this opportunity to speak in favor of this project, strongly in favor of this project. I think one of the things that we sometimes miss in all these discussions, including the Humboldt Bike Lanes and this project and some of the others that we've been seeing is how the ground is shifting under our feet. You only have to be out in the city for a few minutes before you realize that people who weren't using bikes or scooters before are taking advantage of the technology, the availability of bikes and scooters that can take them much faster, much further. And it's mushrooming in my neighborhood alone, near Humboldt Street on those bike lanes, I am seeking, seeing workers on motorized scooters, on e-bikes, on regular bikes, really taking advantage of the bike lanes since they were put in. So if you went and toured these sites months ago, if you went and toured Delaware months ago, the situation on the ground is very different and it's going to continue to get different and we have to get ahead of that. So we just had a horrible incident where two kids, uh, or a child and another, and his sister were, um, were, were hurt and, and the boy was killed by a car entering, um, the lane, not seeing a bicyclist and apparently from what it looks like they got startled. And everybody rushed to blame the bicyclists and it was an 11-year-old kid and his sister on a bike. The police have stated that they were in the right, they were in, they had the right of way. We've got to get infrastructure for people to operate bikes and scooters safely in our community. And this project is a shining example of doing just that. And so you should be voting enthusiastically yes on this. Let's go build it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Philip King, followed by Danielle Gray and Seema Patel.
Sorry, I will. Uh, good evening, council. I want to thank you for having us tonight, uh, to give comment and thanks staff for all the work that's gone into this project. I'm Phil King. This is my daughter Emerson. She's been desperate to say hello.
Hello.
Thank you. Uh, so we are a family that goes to College Park Elementary now at the new location on Bermuda. We've been loving the new location for us. We live over by in the Beresford neighborhood, uh, Portola. We used to bike all the way across town, uh, once or twice a week to the old school over the last couple of years. And this year, as the new year approached, we were just excited to have a five-minute bike ride instead of a 15-minute bike ride. What we have found actually is that lots of other parents at the school are feeling the same way. We have, I think we've ridden almost every day over the last three weeks since school started and we have impromptu unplanned bike buses forming between our neighborhood and the school, which is really exciting as a bike nerd. We have, you know, so then kids are saying hi and chatting on the way to school and it's been a great way to spend, uh, getting the time getting to school. Turns out it's also faster than driving for us. Um, so it's been a win on multiple levels. We do however, feel pretty stressed, or at least I do, uh, riding with my kid on the back. It's great that there's bike lanes already there, um, but I'm really excited for them to get better and provide more safety. You know, allow us to kind of zip through without having to worry so much about getting doored or needing to go out into traffic to get around, uh, you know, somebody who's parking. So I really do hope that you'll support this project and get it going. There's a lot of families who are going to benefit who are crossing town from, from where we are. And it'll be really great when it all connects together, hopefully with, um, you know, projects in the pipeline too. So thanks for all the hard work and it's good to see some of the, the plans come together to benefit the local neighbors too. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Danielle Gray, followed by Seema Patel and Paul Willard.
Hi, um, my name's Danielle Gray. I live in the Bay Meadows neighborhood. I am also a family that's loading up my five-year-old and two-year-old and our cargo bike every morning to ride down to George Hall Elementary School from Bay Meadows. We also take the cargo bike to extracurricular activities to parks. We can go to farther parks now. And I was super excited to see the original design that was presented. It had everything that I would have hoped for on Delaware Street, especially the parking protected bike lanes and the road diet, um, because that also contributes to safety. So while I still am in favor generally of this plan, I do wish we could go back to the original plan as it was proposed with more space for bikes and less space for cars. I am concerned that having the two lanes southbound is going to encourage more people to bypass off of the crowd in 92 and cut right through my neighborhood where I'm cycling with my children. And people who are doing that, they're thinking of speed. They're not thinking about the fact that there are a lot of kids. I'm also seeing more and more families who are biking to George Hall, biking to other things around the area. We take the bike to the Y and we were out there all the time. And right now it's, it is scary, um, at times. We've been nearly sideswiped. We've had people, um, run into us, not see us when we need to make a turn. And if we can make that roadway narrower, it would be that much safer. There would be fewer conflicts. We'd have fewer people who are just trying to get from Foster City, um, out of the city, cutting through our neighborhood. So very much in favor. Thank you for protecting our community, protecting our neighborhoods with these bike lanes. But I would love it if we could do the absolute best that we can and really make this project a showstopper to show what can be done.
Thank you. Our next two speakers will be Seema Patel, followed by Paul Willard.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and city council members. Um, I currently serve on the planning commission, but I am speaking tonight on my own behalf as a resident of San Mateo. I am requesting that you approve this project, which adds some much-needed safety improvements to the bike lanes and intersections on Delaware Street, making access to College Park Elementary, the Nueva School and the county event center safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. I want to note that a previous version of the design, which was based on the traffic operations analysis, eliminated one vehicle lane between Bermuda and Saratoga to preserve as much street parking as possible. Based on feedback from residents on the west side of Delaware, eight additional street parking spaces were removed on the east side of Delaware to restore the vehicle lane. In addition to the loss of parking, the bicycle lanes on sections B and C were narrowed to five feet, which I think many of us did not realize until today. Five feet is significantly smaller than the National Association of City Transportation Official Standards of a minimum ridable width of six and a half feet and preferred ridable width of eight feet for one-way protected bike lanes. Five feet may feel tight, especially for larger cargo bikes that parents use to drop their kids off at school and may require riding on the gutter pan seam, which is not always stable. I think it's important to consider these trade-offs and the potential daily impacts of these trade-offs when deciding to alter the design to accommodate special situations that happen five to 10 times a year. Finally, as staff noted, Delaware is the only city-controlled roadway that spans the entire length of the city east of 101. It would be fantastic if we could have a protected bike lane or at least a bike lane outside of the door zone along the entire length of Delaware. So I hope you think about that in the future. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Paul Willard.
Thank you. I'm one of those parents who's been taking my daughter to school at College Park since we moved to that campus for the last three weeks. I'm a very confident and competent bike rider, having commuted in San Francisco for decades at this point. But that said, when I have my daughter on the back, I truly appreciate having as much help and space around me as possible. Not just for me, obviously. I have a three-mile ride to school right now. As Phil noted, it's quicker than driving, which is great. That point seven miles, I know it's only point seven miles we're talking about here, but that's the point seven miles. The rest of it is pretty chill. It's pretty relaxed and there's a bunch of people, parents from around my neighborhood, some of which we're picking up along the way right now, but some of which would probably join if that point seven miles wasn't so scary. Scary. Yeah. You always worry about that one-off event. As some others have noted, I love the first plan. I feel like the traffic impact was so small, but I'll take either plan over no plan in a heartbeat. And I just want to express gratitude to our traffic planners as well because they put a lot of thought into this and I appreciate them helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment where our first speaker will be Justin Chow-Beldon. Justin, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Good evening, city council. I'm a high school senior at the Nueva School and I would like to speak in strong favor of this project. The Delaware Safe Streets Project is extremely important to me and my school community. The project greatly improves the safety of all Nueva students and faculty who take Caltrain, walk, bike or scooter to school. I witnessed firsthand my friend getting hit by a car while crossing East 28th Delaware Street intersection on a scooter. I currently do not feel safe biking on Delaware Street. This project is amazing. Not only does it implement a pedestrian scramble, but it also provides San Mateo with its first protected class four bike lanes, which provides a huge safety improvement over other bike treatments. Thank you, San Mateo.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Sean Showchat. Please go ahead and unmute your mic. Sean, please go ahead and unmute your mic at this time.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you to the councilman. I just want to say that, oh, starting out, I am a teacher at the Nueva School and I commute from the Beresford neighborhood, neighborhood daily to the Nueva School. Our community at Nueva has the majority of people commuting non-vehicle wise. So we are, uh, doing what I think is expected, um, in 2025. And I want to see more of that. And the way we see more of that is providing safe routes. Delaware between 25th and 28th is what I see every day and vehicles go quite fast. The road dieting I thought was, um, really cool, um, in the first plan. And, uh, and I want to see more road dieting because that's how we get bicyclists, bicyclists to feel safe. We slow down the cars. And so I'm strongly in favor of either plan. Of course, the first is better for our cyclists. The second is still an achievement for San Mateo and I appreciate all that's gone into it. And I just say, get this done now, get 25th and 28th better. Because those are the side projects leading into Delaware. And then also finally move on to Alameda de Las Polgas and the other Bicycle Master Plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mike Swire. Mike, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Yeah, thanks so much, uh, council and thanks especially to Sang and Bethany and the rest of the Public Works team. They did a great job, tons of outreach, tons of expert opinion. Um, this is definitely a huge step forward for the city of San Mateo, our first lengthy protected bike lanes. Um, we're playing catch-up, but this is a great way to start. This will truly make people safe and comfortable, uh, through the majority of it. Unfortunately, I too am frustrated that the original design by our expert staff members seems to have been watered down due to largely subjective concerns about congestion that were largely disproven by staff. So I really don't understand why concerns over congestion amongst community members are taking press priority over the scientific studies that staff suggested that congestion would not be much worse, if at all, um, especially only for a couple of events a year. I'm disappointed that we're narrowing the width of the bike lanes. The fact that the late car lanes are 12 and a half feet wide, that's wider than lots of portions of 101. And of course, the wider a travel lane, the faster cars go. In my opinion, the biggest problem is not the protection for bikes, it's the number and speed of cars going through the corridor. And without the road diet, you're still going to have cars racing through north, um, not north central, through Bay Meadows where I live, on Delaware, on Saratoga, we need to reduce the cut-through traffic. And by not cutting down on the number of car lanes, we're simply going to be perpetuating the problem. So I would prefer to see safety prioritized over, um, uh, more car traffic, but thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rick Ballard. Rick, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Hi, thanks council. Um, I live on South Delaware Street in North Central, so I take Delaware down quite a bit. I am able to bike almost exclusively as my mode of transit here. Uh, it's very effective and that means I'm a one-car family instead of a two-car family. You know, I know parking is very contentious here. I will say the more people we let bike like this, the, the fewer cars we can have and the less parking that takes. So I, I really appreciate that we're moving forward on projects like this and supporting the build-out of bike infrastructure, which will let people bike. I really strongly urge you to support this. I don't think this is a perfect design, but I, I'm really glad. I hope we're moving forward and we continue to build this out. There's a couple of things I want to bring up that I want council to be aware of as we design these sorts of bike lanes. And some of the lanes we've been putting in, uh, in general are in car door zones. Some of the existing lanes on Delaware are terrible for this. Even the new B Street bike lanes that went in are pretty much in the car door zone. And I don't think a lot of people are aware of how dangerous that is. I really appreciate that this project is not putting any lanes in the car door zone. I think that's really important for making this safe for serious cycling. I'm also generally concerned that we are mindful of sightlines in general. I know a lot of people have talked about the recent terrible incident and in general cars pulling out of whether it's driveways or side streets and not seeing cyclists because of the sightlines, cars turning right, the right hook collision is a of the sightlines, cars turning right, the right hook collision is a major issue that hits cyclists. It sounds like there might be a few concerns around this design, so I hope we can look at that and make sure that we can do everything we can. But I urge Council in general to be considering that with bike routes. I am a little concerned about the lane width. I know this has been raised. I'll say, someone who uses a cycle to get around, or a bicycle to get around in a serious way, it means some of us may wind up taking the vehicle lane instead of using the cycle lane if we can't use that because it's so narrow that, you know, you're not able to coexist with more recreational cyclists or kids. That said, it's really, really important that we make it safe for kids and recreational cyclists.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Council.
And our final comment will be from Yee Lee Young. Please go ahead and unmute your mic, Yee Lee.
Hello. Thank you for this project that the staff's working on, and I'm very impressed by the original plan as well. But I would take the second one, too, if anything. I personally commute from North Central all the way to Kaiser in San Mateo, across from Whole Food. So Delaware and Humboldt Street are my routes. And right now, the safest part to the bike is Humboldt Bike Lane, and the worst part is Delaware and Saratoga Avenue. So I'm very happy that we're doing something about this Delaware Street, that section. I do appreciate a wider bike, protected bike lane. Like many, like the staff mentioned earlier, it makes a big difference when you're on a narrow bike lane versus slightly wider, and you get a little bit more room when car comes fast and closer to you, than you get to bike a little bit to the edge. So this is definitely a safety concern. But totally, I would appreciate any improvement than no improvement. But the original plan is sound so much better. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Well, I will close public comment and open up for questions, comments, and directions from staff. I'm going to take the liberty, because this is my district and I've been in a lot of meetings, to actually go first, which I never do, so neener, neener, neener. Okay, so some clarifying questions. One, I think this has been a great process. You know, we've listened to the neighborhood concerns, and we've addressed them. We've done a really good job of getting in front of the concerns, so I want to thank and commend staff for that. Question about parking, and more of a comment really, is I want to make sure that we're putting in the presentation that while we may be losing 14 spaces on Delaware Street, we will be picking up three to six more on Pacific. And I think we don't want to water that down, because that's really something that was an outreach and a concern. So I want to make sure that we do that. We also had great buy-in and really good community support with the CEO Dana Store for the Expo and Fairgrounds. She's even said that if it really came down to it, that she would give us a potential another parking space on the corner lot of Saratoga and South Delaware Street. And hopefully, we don't find ourselves in the need for that. But I think, again, we should make sure we put it in the document, that it's a known thing that we can combat if that becomes a problem down the road. Secondly, just more of a note, but you know, I went to the last two, both the presentations at the school, and I want to make sure that we do change all the slides to reflect the new school name, which is College Park is now there, not Fiesta Gardens, but our slides all still stay Fiesta Gardens. Minor tweak. Third, I know we will be, or at least I believe we'll be addressing this when we address the 19th Avenue Corridor, but I do think, as a person who rides this probably every couple months, and I watch people, because I live right there, I think we really need to make sure we put a focus on the 19th Avenue and Concar overpasses. So when you take South Delaware from either the north or the south, and having to cross Concar and then the parking lot there, I think it's at Exxon, that area is extremely sketchy and scary. And I think this is going to solve a lot of problems if we're coming from the south, but right now, we need to make sure that we address, and I know this will be hopefully addressed in the 19th Avenue Corridor Park, but I want to make sure that that's on record. Because without it, coming from the north is still going to be scary for those few blocks. And I don't think we can address this, but I did want to call out something that I observed this past weekend. The two city buildings, or buildings that are owned by the city at 1990 and 2000, South Delaware Street, even with the current proposed project, we still see Amazon trucks particularly, food delivery vehicles, and even people dropping off friends and family to those two buildings. They're going to be continuing to stop in the bike lane, although I'm not sure how that's going to work with the, sorry, the little ballards, but I think that actually might help, because that'll be less able for people to stop. They might just be stopping, though, in the middle of the road. So I don't know if there's anything we can do, but as we, I think, own those buildings, it might be interesting to see if they're, in the future, couldn't be a pullout there. I kind of overlooked the fact that these bike lanes are being narrowed. And I'm wondering, could we narrow the three car lengths by, car lanes by a foot, and then pick up a little bit of extension on the two bike lanes? Is that feasible? Or?
So there is a section on the northerly part of that segment where we definitely can look at that, the possibility of widening that. On the southerly section, the travel lanes are as narrow as they can get. And so we can't narrow them any further. And the buffers that we're providing, we don't want to narrow those any further either to be able to provide that. We think that the buffers are a really important component to this. And so that's kind of the trade-off that we're making with this design, one of the trade-offs.
Sure. In being in the public meetings and also walking a lot of Fiesta Gardens, I do think, and now that feels kind of confusing. Fiesta Gardens is not in Fiesta Gardens anymore, but on the approach to College Park, I do want to make sure that we continue to look at the connectivity from Delaware Street to College Park and make that as safe and more robust as possible. Because again, I don't want people to have that last, you know, quarter of a mile or whatever it is, eighth of a mile maybe, be the reason why they don't bike. So those are my comments. Any questions about them? Well, then I'll go into my little prepared. I want to thank all city staff for all you've done on this project and proposal. You've really pivoted, you've heard the concerns, and I feel as though we've sufficiently addressed all the concerns when it comes to infrastructure. The biggest one that we didn't really talk about tonight, but needing the ability to pull in the driveways would have been catastrophic if we removed that, because they would have had to go a half a mile or quarter of a mile one direction and half a mile the other to make a U-turn, which, of course, no one would ever have done. So it would have been making it for a dangerous situation. So I'm glad that we've addressed that. I know that there are people that say we didn't need to maintain that car lane, but you know, as I look at the project for Passages Project that's coming, and the projects that are coming down on 19th Avenue, and also the concerns with the Expo Center, I think that, you know, finding this middle ground was the right thing to do. As we continue to grow, we need to make sure that even, if you think about it, if bicycle ridership were multiplied by 500 times and car usage only goes up by 5%, it's still a concern to be removing lanes. So I think we've done a good job of kind of finding a solution. And I, while everybody might not be thrilled, I think that that kind of goes with the job of we've, we found a compromise that everybody can live with. I do also think, and of course, I'm speaking on my own behalf, but I think I could say it's for the whole council, that we're all in resounding agreement that safe streets for everyone is critical. And there are three schools that are impacted immediately by this. There are multiple neighborhoods that are impacted by this. So I think we're doing the right thing by moving forward with this project. As a community, and then used to engrow, it's important that we plan for this growth and that our projects look for and find compromise at every turn. We heard from people earlier today about Humboldt Street, and I, none of this council were really involved in the decision to move forward with Humboldt Street, but I'm confident that with what you have presented to us, that none of us will find ourselves in that situation in the future, where the neighbors are upset or that the bike riders are upset. We've actually found middle ground, which appeases everyone. And so for that, I'm very thankful to all the city staff, and I'd like to wholeheartedly and resoundingly say that I support moving forward with this project. Thank you. Who wants to go next? Councilmember Fernandez.
Questions, but I think I need to direct them to the city manager. When is 19th and Delaware coming to us?
Is it Fashion Island Norfolk?
Sorry, Fashion Island.
Fashion Island Norfolk, that is coming at the next council meeting, actually, September 15th. We're given a kind of preview.
Okay.
Preliminary.
And in the transition, I know that there was discussion of the city potentially taking ownership of maybe 20 spots at the event center. We opted not to do that.
So at this time, the event center said that they'd be willing to explore the possibility, understanding that we are going to add additional parking spaces on Pacific. Wanted to see how that works out first, if there's still issue. That is something that staff can explore further with the event center.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I thank you for that information. And then my remarks, I just wanted to say that I was milquetoasted best about this project. I was concerned about how this would affect surrounding residents and the lack of engagement with the event center, but I just want to call out and give props to staff for hearing the feedback from council and our community. At the last presentation, you all acted swiftly and engaged the community in feedback. So I just want to give a lot of, applaud the staff and our city manager for working with our community and the San Mateo Event Center on addressing their concerns. That was a huge, huge factor. I know no group is 100% happy with the second design, and I understand those concerns, but like, to echo the mayor, this is a start of a conversation. Hopefully, there will be more happier residents than unhappy residents. So to take a note from my constituent Kevin Simpson's remarks, I'm enthusiastically supporting this project at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. A great presentation. Appreciate the update. Just some kind of looser tactical questions. So you mentioned in your presentation, trash handling behaviors will have to change. Can you elaborate what that means?
Yes, maybe I can even share the presentation again. But essentially, for about seven to 10, there's, I believe, seven duplexes on the east side of South Delaware Street, south of Bermuda Drive. And because we're relocating the bike lane from between where it is right now, between the parked vehicles on the curb or by the curb side and the travel lane, and we're actually relocating the bike lane to the curb side, we essentially don't want trash bins to be left out within the bike lanes. Because right now, folks are leaving them out by the curb, as most residences do. So because we're actually pushing the bike lane to the curb, we are having a special designated spot for residents to be able to put out their trash bins post-project conditions.
And has that been, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, if I can. During our April outreach, our phase, the beginning of our Phase 2 outreach, we did have a targeted meeting for that group in particular, including a flyer, excuse me, mailer, and we did door knocking to talk through what that change was going to look like. So we explained what that was going to look like. And like I said, we had a community meeting specifically for that group to be able to walk through that.
Awesome, thank you. And then I know that you mentioned SAM Trans coordination meetings were taking place. And in some of the images, it looks like the bus goes into the bike lane, is that correct? Can we just pull that up?
Yes, I can pull that up.
Sorry.
Believe you should see it now, not the relevant slide, but I think you're referring to this area?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is north of East 28th Avenue and the South Delaware Street intersection, headed north. Yes, there is a point where bikes would have to, what bikes would be expected to share that space towards the left of that long pink circle or ellipse. Essentially, that space would only be expected to be shared by bikes or by buses in that bike lane. And that's largely because we're not able to relocate the bus to the travel lanes here. We potentially discussed that option with SAM Trans, but essentially, that bus stop is there to stay in favor of keeping the bikes protected with the short-term parking spaces here.
Do we know how many times a day it stops? If you don't, we can follow up.
Yeah, we can follow up on that. And one more comment, if I may, is that all the buses are required to get to the curb side, and so there is a, they do need to get into that space. And we did look in this area at what's called the Bus Boarding Island, that pushes that weight area, like sort of adjacent to the travel lane. And in this area in particular, that you're seeing on the screen, we do anticipate that this stop may move to under the, right where the Caltrain station is. And so we didn't want to do the more substantial infrastructure improvements at this location, because we may be ripping it out in the future with a forthcoming project, the 28th Avenue Gap Closure Project.
Okay, thank you. And then I know this has come up, but I just want to clarify. So with the parking spots on Pacific, the feedback was, we're looking to add? So do we know definitively if we can add those three to six spots or not?
We can add, just the number, I'm looking to staff. Bethany, what are we looking at?
We're still in the process of doing that design, so that's why it's arranged right now. So we're looking more specifically at adding angled spaces. And so the design right now, like I said, is in process. We just need to make sure that those angled spaces work in that area. It is quite wide, and it should be able to facilitate all of that, and that would get us the most amount of spaces. But if it doesn't work, that's where we'd be looking at that lower number.
Okay, great. And then just on Third and Norfolk, we did a really great job with signage and kind of keeping the community engaged around, you know, what's happening with the construction. So this is a fall-to-winter project. I just want to make sure we have a similar plan in place, because Delaware is so busy, and it is a high-traffic, high-volume area, especially around the Arco Station. It can really back up there. So I think those are kind of my big things. I'm in favor of this project. I think it's a big deal. I know it's mostly grant-funded, correct?
100%.
And it would be like the first real protected bike lane in the city?
Separated bike lane, correct.
Yeah, so I think it's.
There is a small portion. Third, was it, between Third and Fourth?
My district, Third and Norfolk. But this is the real, like, across the city.
It's the longest.
And I just want to also add on to Mayor Newsom's comments about connecting to College Park. I'd love to see that along Bermuda Drive in the future. But generally supportive of this project. Thank you.
Once again, kudos to staff and kudos to the community, because this was a long discussion. People on, from all opinions, approached it very respectfully. Everyone was concerned for safety from the beginning, and I think we've come to a solution. And I absolutely, I'm very much in favor of it. I look forward to seeing it happen. And I'm interested in what staff is going to take away from this whole exercise, especially you, Bethany, you've been in it from forever. And what have you learned that you can take forward to other projects to, you know, help ensure a great outcome?
I wasn't sure if that was a rhetorical question. No, certainly. I think, I think we definitely are taking cues from the various outreach efforts that we're having to do for these types of projects, and we're trying to carry those forward into new projects. So you'll see some of that at the 19th Avenue Fashion Island Boulevard project that I'll be presenting next, the next council meeting, about the approach that we're using for that outreach and just communicating these types of projects to the community.
Great, well, I look forward to seeing all that. And I also, once again, want to underline, this is a fantastic example of community focus in our efforts. I mean, this is what we talked about earlier in the strategic plan. This is just a great example. And once again, thank you to staff and thank you to the community.
Thank you to the mayor. I certainly support this project and the new design, and I very. And I very do much echo my colleagues in thanking Public Works for putting extra work into this project. Listening to the community and coming up with a solution that we may, you know, a compromise that may not have been anyone's first choice, but that can work for Samatan cyclists, neighbors, cyclist neighbors, and those aspiring to be one of these. This is an important project for many of the reasons that were mentioned earlier in the presentation and others in the community and council have brought up. But I just wanted to stress a little more that this is a piece of a broader investment in circulation and transportation for our future. And this is a future that forecasts considerable growth in our city over the next couple decades, as we've seen through our general plan. Growth in our population, growth in businesses and commercial spaces. And as we see when we look through design alternatives on our streets, they don't get any wider, whether we look into a multimodal project or not. If we don't pursue multimodal options, there will also be parking and congestion challenges in our future. And they will likely get worse and worse. If you give people no alternative, then people will bring their cars. So this is a piece of a network that we're building piece by piece, partly because of funding constraints. But I just want to stress that we should, let us not fully judge this piece's efficacy and value by bike and micro mobility use in the present without a full network. We just mentioned that we're going to soon be discussing 19th Fashion Island and Norfolk. That will be a connector for many users of this project. We're also working on a 28th Avenue and El Camino Real Gap Closure Project. That will also potentially connect to this project for some users. And Mayor Newsom, other community members, council members mentioned interest in moving on to Bermuda. And this is a long, this is going to be a long road for us. And it's going to require patience and understanding and vision maintained in a sustainable multimodal future. We need to, you know, just avoid getting into situations in which we deliberate to the point where we can't move forward with important pieces of this project for their own merits. Because there's a bigger picture at hand that's envisioned in our general plan, in our climate action plan, in our Bike Master Plan. I understand it's hard. It's hard to, to think about our future when we're living in the present. But yet I urge us to please do our best to consider it. And I think the good news and silver lining to that is that every time we do create a piece of this network, we will get to see part of that future made real. I think a clear example to me, some people brought it up in public comment through email and so on, is Burlingame and California Drive. And I've heard a number of people say, why would you, you know, worry about one mile worth of, you know, street thoroughfareic? There were trade-offs made there too. But of course, the city of San Mateo did a road diet plan on San Mateo Drive to the north of that. And there was a similar bike lane project done near the BART station in Mowbray. And when you put all three of those together, you can suddenly go from San Mateo to Mowbray BART. But it doesn't happen overnight. And each of those pieces is less valuable by itself than it is as part of the broader network. So I just wanted to make sure that was something we talk about and appreciate here. And along with that, the need to get started. Because it is taking us a long time to make real progress on these long-term piece-by-piece goals. And, you know, I had the opportunity of going to Bike Summit, the Soakin Valley Bicycle Coalition in South San Francisco last week, where Mayor Eddie Flores of the city of South San Francisco got to present a little bit on a program that he got to work on in concert with school districts, with regional organizations, getting regional and now state funding to give children bikes and to teach them how to ride them. And that's another piece, right? We're not, we're not going to be able to see the fruits of this labor tomorrow, even if we put the bike lane in. As was mentioned earlier, when we talked about our strategic plan, we are in a period of transition in our city. And, and there will be growing pains and there will be transitional pains as we begin that transition. And it won't happen overnight, but if we can commit to the priorities we have in our strategic plan, general plan, and more, it'll eventually produce a better, safer, more sustainable future in our city. So thank you, everybody, for your support of this important project. I'm excited to be with you in sharing my support.
So there's no vote tonight on this, but we have unanimous direction to move forward with the updated design. I see nodding heads across the dais this evening. Next step will be is staff's going to quickly bid this project out. And this item will be coming back on the consent calendar, I believe in either November or December, Bethany? Yeah, I'm seeing nodding head, which? Okay, November for final council approval. And then as you saw in the slide, construction will begin here in the new year and hopefully be completed shortly thereafter. So thank you for the direction this evening.
Thank you again, Bethany and Sang for a fantastic presentation. I'm excited to have the first protected bike lane in the city of San Mateo in the heart of District Three. So thanks so much. Okay, we're going to close it out with reports and announcements. Does anyone on the council have some reports or announcements? We'll start this way and work our way over. Councilmember Swarko Kadiki.
Thank you. First and foremost, Chantal, congratulations on one year with the city of San Mateo, correct? Way to go. I'm very excited about that. So on Saturday, September 6th is the Chili Cookoff in Central Park. Very exciting. Sorry, did I steal everybody's announcement? So, well, Rob, you can say it again. I did want to share, since you all appointed me, I went to my first PAL board meeting last week. And there are a ton of great projects and events in flight, so I wanted to share those with you. On September 26th, since I know we were talking about biking, there is a Barris Ford Park Bike Rodeo. You can attend the bike rodeo from 5:00 to 6:30 PM. And then there's actually movies in the park right after at 7:00 PM. And it's a free event, so check it out. October 11th, PAL is also hosting from 12:00 to 3:00 PM at MLK Center, a Dia de los Muertos event. If you're interested in sponsoring, great opportunity to get involved. Then I know we've talked quite a bit about our unit and ABU. So on November 9th at 2:30 PM, the Elks Club is hosting a packing day for our unit. And we definitely will need help from folks if you can come out and get involved. So those were my big kind of announcements. I also just wanted to just remind everybody that if you're interested in getting involved with PAL, you can join Rookie's Club, become a monthly member. I heard that our mayor, Rob Newsom, is a part of Rookie's Club. And then just the last thing for the city manager. We heard from the Carpenters Union tonight, and I know that we are looking at the PLA in November. Is this something we can also look at?
I would say not the same night. These are two separate items. I would say that, once again, I have the position that if you want to prioritize an item, it'd be the Blue Sky session of when you'd want to make that decision on prioritization. Staff would need to look, this is a completely separate, this is an ordinance. Whereas the PLA CWA is a separate vehicle of how this would work. And there's different things happening on both, both items. And so if you decided to move forward in advance of a Blue Sky, then I'd have to find, you know, have to figure out what we deprioritize once again to take on this item as well and figure out a specific date to bring the item forward.
Can I ask a question of you and Persona, actually? So do we not have an ordinance already in place that addresses this? And if, so I guess, could you tell me briefly, like, what differentiates what they're asking for versus what we currently have in place?
Well, no, I can't. I mean, we do have a pre-qualification ordinance that's part of the purchasing code. As far as like trying to distinguish between what we have in the books and what they're proposing, that requires some, that would require some follow-up. I also wanted to remind the council that there's a number of ordinance projects that are coming before the council at the council direction. And I won't rattle off the entire list for you, but it's a pretty lengthy list. So if the council provides a direction to move forward on this, then it would have to work its way into that list.
I guess as a follow-up, would it be something that you could, though, give us a synopsis of what differentiates from the existing ordinance as to what they're asking for? Is that something you could report out to us?
I could follow up with the council on that at a later time.
Okay. Does anybody else have feedback on that?
Yeah, sure.
Earlier, we had a bit of research done by staff to respond in a way to the initial proposal related to the Community Workforce Agreement. And I guess I was curious as to whether we might be able to ask for something like that in between and before Blue Sky. And whether that would be different from what you were just asking.
I don't think it really is different. I mean, I think staff could, myself, along with city manager and other appropriate staff, could follow up with the council in the same way to provide some comments, some description of what is being proposed in this draft document versus what's already on the books. So the short answer is yes, we can follow up in a similar way, which is different than an agenda item in front of the council.
Understood. Do we have a third taker on this idea?
Well, I think we only have one, sorry, if I may, to the mayor. I think right now there's, there's one council member that's asking the question. I don't know if I've heard a second or not.
Well, is it an either-or thing?
Well, I was just asking more if this can be folded into the existing update that we're getting in November, but it sounds like they're separate, so I'd have to bring it back for discussion.
So there's two different things going on here. You could decide to schedule this for a separate study session outside of the CWA item, because there's separate items. The city attorney has put forward, or the mayor asked whether or not we can do a similar, just quick review and give an update of staff's position on what this would be, like what we did with the Labor Council's requests. That's not, that's way different. That's a lot easier than a study session to prepare for, for an item. So there's two different things. You could schedule a study session or we could take a first review and provide a memo to the full council for further review.
Through the mayor, I was wondering if we, I mean, it does, it does sound like balancing both the CWA and the pre-quals are, are heavy staff lift. I would ask that this council consider just moving this to Blue Sky. And we're trying to find someone to champion this at Blue Sky. We don't overwhelm the team right now.
So yes, I, I know we had a, an item earlier in which we talked about keeping things at Blue Sky. When we talked about the last proposal, I was interested in waiting until Blue Sky for that one as well. And so I think I am in agreement on interest in getting a staff response to this in advance of that.
Anything you want to weigh in?
So I heard, so I heard two for the Blue Skies. Is there a third person waiting for the Blue Sky?
Well, I, just to be clear, though, I think Deputy Mayor was saying that he still would, however, like
No, I have no problem. We can, we can go ahead and do
So if we're saying, if we're saying that, yes, we will plan on waiting for the Blue Sky, but we would also like
In the meantime.
A report in the meantime, then that is where I find myself as well.
Do a quick memo. So councilmember Fernandez, you kind of brought up the similar idea. Are you on board with that? Just Blue Sky, no.
Yeah, I'm okay with Blue Sky.
Okay, that's two. Blue Sky. Okay, so there will not be any analysis done in the meantime. We'll just wait for Blue Sky. Thank you.
Okay.
I think Adam has a comment.
I was just, just confirming that that was what people were saying when they were saying just Blue Sky.
To elucidate, I would like us to take up consideration, including any preliminary briefings going into Blue Sky in February on the pre-quals matter. That's, that clear?
Yep.
So you'd like a memo in advance of Blue Sky?
No, she didn't say that.
Okay.
We didn't get three for the memo.
That's what I'm saying. So what it stands for is we're just going to be, a council member can decide to bring this as one of their top three priorities for Blue Sky consideration. And see if there's three votes to move this thing forward for a July 2020, you know, to plan for the next fiscal year. Okay.
That's what we heard. Thank you.
I'm in direction. Thank you.
Okay, who's, yes, one more report and announcement.
One more thing. So I also just wanted to thank city staff on, and just make the council aware. So there's a project being done along 101 and 92. And there has been pile driving that has been going on throughout the night from basically 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. It is keeping a lot of our residents awake. It's going on through basically October for six weeks. And I know that city staff has done a ton of work with the TA to try to mitigate. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And obviously, if you have more questions, you can reach out to the city council, myself, or to city staff. So.
City staff, we can spare you guys. Go ahead and just reach out to city staff. It's our job.
All right. Thank you very much. That's it. I'm done.
Deputy Mayor? No additional reports, announcements. Okay, well, I said we're going to work our way this way. So councilmember Fernandez.
Slow your roll, council member. So just a couple of things that I want to bring up. We have our commissioner dinner on Thursday. So if you're a commissioner and you're paying attention, make sure you come on out and RSVP to Martin. Well, they should have RSVPed. Just wanted to check in. Is that like a dress theme that council has to abide by?
We have a theme of, we have a theme of We have a theme of international. So if you'd like to do some, pick a country and dress the part, you can.
I can, I think we're good. We're set. And then just remind the community's welcome at our wastewater treatment plant ribbon cutting on 9/24. I just wanted to update, and I'm sorry, there's another event. There's going to be a childcare listening session that is being, featuring Supervisor Lisa Gochet and Supervisor Jackie Spear on 9/16, on September 16th, at the Oak Room, Oak Room at the Downtown Library, trying to find out stories Trying to find out stories from providers and parents about any issues that they're experiencing, you might be experiencing in obtaining or paying for childcare. And then I just wanted to do an outreach on two subcommittee items. We had a, me and Alex and Mayor Rob had a two-by-two with San Mateo Foster City. And I just wanted to do a very, and I wanted to thank Alex for diligently updating the San Mateo Foster City team on what we're doing. And Superintendent Diego Ochoa for updating us on what they're doing. And there have been communication issues that have been as part of our, that have been issues between the school district and the city. And I just want to thank the school district for committing to do additional outreach in more sensitive areas, moving forward on some of their bigger, moving, some of their bigger projects. Stop laughing. And then I also just want to reach, do a report out on a, I don't know if it was a subcommittee meeting, but basically a meeting with Mayor Peter Stevenson of Burlingame and Burlingame's Public Works Director, and then our Public Works Director, Matt Fabry, and then some other ancillary staff on pedestrian safety upgrades on Peninsula between San Mateo Drive and 101. There's work moving forward there. There is a lot of co-planning happening between our public works team. And it was really great to be apprised of what's happening. And in the future, hopefully, there will be a joint grant, grant proposal for some pedestrian and bicyclist safety measures in that area. So I'm really excited about seeing that happen. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Diaz Nash.
And apologies for getting out in front of Councilmember Fernandez. Okay, a couple of things. Let's see, number one, for anyone interested in electrification, what's happening in San Mateo. San Mateo City Staff Andrea Chow, our sustainability analyst, will be at the main branch of the public library tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30 in the Laurel Room, speaking to residents. It's being sponsored by the Baywood Neighborhood Association. But obviously, anyone who's interested should go and listen in. I think it should be a good discussion. Number two, who can forget this Thursday night is September Nights on B? So, you know, it's the following Thursday? Oh, I thought this weekend was, this week was, excuse me, 9/11 and 9- That's right. Okay, I'm just very excited. So this, this Thursday, go to Boards and Commissions. Next Thursday and the Thursday after, go to September Nights on B. They will be amazing. And then also on the 25th of September, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, HART, which is a county multi-jurisdictional organization focused on workforce housing, is having our annual networking event at Devil's Canyon Brewery. And we'd love to see everyone come out at 5:00 o'clock. A good time and support for workforce housing.
Fantastic. Yes, and we're going to go back to the deputy mayor.
Just one quick, through the mayor, thank you. I remembered that September is Transit Month. So please consider taking transit. It's great. It's gotten much better. We, you know, we've had about one year of electric Caltrain now, and the numbers that are coming in are good. And I, I've been taking a lot of Sam Trans lately because I happened to run over a nail on my bike. But I happened to be on a route for Sam Trans. How convenient. And I was able to put my bike on their newer, heavier racks for bigger e-bikes and take it all the way to Hillsdale Mall. And then I took it on El Camino to San Carlos to take it to the bike shop. And then I was able to take Caltrain today from my work in South San Francisco to San Carlos to be representing us on the Rethink Waste Legislative Committee this afternoon before taking Caltrain back to Haywood Park to walk over here. And I look forward to taking ECR back. So you don't have to do it that much to enjoy Transit Month. But as you may know, commute.org offers people in our county free rewards for taking part in activities. If you get stuck, like me, you can, you know, and you don't have a 60-pound bike you need to haul, you can hail a lift cart and then get reimbursed through commute.org. So you won't be left hanging and you could win stuff. I win stuff every few months, you know? I won a backpack and they have giveaways, they, they give you gift cards. Check it out. They have an app. It's so easy.
Yes, as long as the value's under $50, yes. Thank you for shout out about Transit Month. I actually have planned and will be taking the train and commute.org's shuttle to work five times this month. I tried to figure out I could do it more, but five is all I could pull off with my schedule. But, but I'm thrilled because five is way better than none. So, and, and I love, I love the train and I love commute.org. And I'm not just saying that because I'm their liaison, but, but also they drop off directly in front of my place of work, which you can't get any more convenient than that. I think we've covered everything I had. Just looking forward to seeing everyone out there on Thursday Nights on B. Looking forward to movie nights, as are my kids. And I hope we get lots of family and lots of people out there for movie nights. And of course, I want to remind everyone that, yes, this weekend, we do have the Chili Cook Off. And the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department is going to make the best chili. I'll just say it. It's going to happen. So look forward to having all of you guys there. And with that, we're going to convene tonight, adjourn tonight with a little bit of a sadder note. Before we close tonight's meeting, we're going to pause to acknowledge the tragic events of the recent attack at a Catholic school in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Our hosts go out to the victims, their families, and the entire community as they face this unimaginable loss. In solidarity and respect, we're adjourning the meeting tonight in their memories. We will have a quick moment of silence and hold them in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you and good night.